Right, okay. I thought we might be. I'll call the Thursday, February 8th meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council to order at seven o'clock. And please rise and join us in the pledge.
Today.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mrs. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Marvel.
Here.
Mrs. Powell.
Here.
Mrs. Race.
Here.
And Lisa Atchison is here. All right, now we come to the public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portion of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to dress, address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like a response. Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a public comment? I can't talk.
You're doing just fine.
All right, and is there anybody on Zoom that would like to make a comment? Raise your hand or take yourself off speaker. Or on speaker, turn your speaker on. Okay, well, we will. Skip the Creative Technology Capitol Campaign. She's not able to be with us tonight. And there are no scheduled public hearings, so we are going to move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with a, with a addition of Action Item F. And authorizing the sale of real property located within the West Street Industrial Development with the parcel number four one dash zero two three dash six four zero dash zero zero six dash six, more commonly known by the postal address of seven sixty West Street and related matters. That, is that good?
Adam Clark? Okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Marvel?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, Mr. Gross. Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Atch, Ms. Atchison votes yes. Motion carries. Um, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. And I get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will make a motion.
To approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, January eleven, twenty twenty-four. I believe there needs to be a correction made.
And that's in here?
That is in here.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, we're gonna, can you change your motion to approve with corrections?
Sure.
As amended.
As amended? So I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
And Ms. Atchison votes yes. Motion carries. We will now issue the oath of office for the new appointments for the fire department. This is very exciting. Thank you for coming.
Can we not cheer? That was like a face.
Mr. Detloff, if you would please raise your right hand. I, Troy Detloff, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the city charter and the code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of fire chief for the Cedar Springs Fire Department to the best of my abilities.
I do.
If I can now have Steve Shipper. You would raise your right hand. I, Steve Shipper, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the city charter and code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of deputy chief for the, for the Cedar Springs Fire Department to the best of my abilities.
I will.
Yeah. You want us to cut at the end, okay.
If I can now have Brian Jenkins and Dave Barnes. You would raise your right hand. I, Dave Barnes, and I, Brian Jenkins, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the city charter and the code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of captain for the Cedar Springs Fire Department to the best of my abilities.
I will, I will.
And now have Gregory Sealy and Sean Holtrip.
I'm sorry, I want to speak.
You would, please raise your right hand. I, Sean Holtrip, and I, Gregory Sealy, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the city charter and code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of lieutenant, lieutenant for the city of Cedar Springs Fire Department to the best of my abilities.
I will do.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations all.
Done.
Thanks for serving.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Gross.
I'm somewhat responsible for these young men. Not young anymore. They all came on at a younger age while I happened to be in command and very proud of them.
Yeah, thank you. Right, um, you don't have to say if you don't want to, but I know that we're, this is such an exciting meeting, you might want to.
Yeah, you probably have to be.
Thank you. All right, moving on to action items. Action Item seven A, motion to approve ordinance two forty-seven and ordinance to amend marijuana hours of operation, second reading. Mrs. Falcon, would you like to begin the discussion?
So this came to our attention a couple meetings ago where we had a public comment. Uh, one of the local businesses would ask, requested that we entertain a motion to extend the hours of operation if they want to, if, we're not saying the businesses have to close at this time. But, um, so really the paragraph in yellow is the only section of the ordinance that this pertains to. Um, currently it's eight forty-five AM to nine fifteen PM. The request was to be, to extend the closing hours. If you could make a motion tonight, we can get the, uh, get the ordinance amended.
Anybody like to make the motion?
Well, with a motion, we have to make a determination of the time in order to have the motion.
We may have to have discussions, so.
I don't see any, change the time.
Oh. But we have to make a motion to discuss before we discuss.
I, I would make a motion to, I believe the request was midnight? Is that the request?
I think the initial one was midnight, the last council meeting, ten PM, eleven PM was discussed. I don't think we've settled on any.
I'd make motion to extend the time till midnight.
I'll support that motion.
Would you like to start, Karen?
I have nothing.
We should know how you feel, right?
He's like, none.
We know, yeah. Anybody wanna say anything or?
I think that midnight is a little generous. Um.
Personally.
You know, I was thinking ten, but it's already nine fifteen, so I, I'm good with eleven. That's just how I can.
Now I can make a comment on that one.
Okay.
I can understand that one quicker than I can the midnight. I understand it's only an hour, but, uh, I could go with that one more, so.
I was wondering, is there gonna be something different when regarding there's a special event going on till midnight? Will that be brought into this new ordinance, or will we just have a drop dead date at eleven o'clock?
So any special circumstances would be approved separately at a, when you approve a community event, special event, event. This is just ordinance, regular hours of operation. They could stay open till X.
I could support eleven. I wouldn't, downtown especially, it's, we don't have a lot of businesses open beyond ten, ten o'clock. But out on the, uh, in the business district, there could be a reason, more reasonable action for them to be open till eleven. So I guess it would be up to the business whether they're getting any traffic or not.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question about Police Sergeant? So Sergeant Probst, when we were having this conversation, um, we were, one of the questions was, has there been any difficulties in the evenings with?
Current times, so we've not had any issues.
Okay, is there any issue at like, like at closing or? Okay. I think you said actually the most difficult time, if I remember correctly, is when they're closed. Cause that's when people break in. I'm just saying, like, I don't, I guess I have a. My question is more about the, um, do you have any issues with when bars close with like?
After hours at midnight, two o'clock, kid turning around.
I, I, what I'm trying to look at is, um, like if rate, when the bars closes, when you have a, like, patrolling, like heightened amount of people out on the streets that you were looking for drunk driving, or like, do we need to make sure the staggered time, or maybe not, I don't know.
Our big shift is five PM to five AM and seven PM to seven AM, so we always have the same cover time.
Okay.
Did, would you, um, wanna change your motion, or would you wanna keep it at twelve?
The motion is at twelve. We can vote on it, and then if it votes down, we can make a new motion. Yeah.
Brought to a vote.
Yep.
We would know where it's at. Okay.
Okay. So, um, let's have a roll call vote.
This is going till eleven?
Twelve, this one's twelve. That's, that's what the motion was.
Which is, which is what they asked for.
Mr. Gross, right?
No.
Mr. Marvel? Mrs. Race?
No.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
I have to say no for, for downtown. I have to say no.
Ms. Atchison votes no.
Okay. But they can bring it back sometime if they want.
There can be another.
Can you have another motion right now?
Fail.
Yeah, so I'll make another motion, so I can do that, right?
Yeah.
I can make another motion to approve ordinance two forty-seven and ordinance to amend marijuana hours to hours of operation to eleven PM.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
I could support that.
Do we wanna vote? Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. No. Okay. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
No.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison votes yes. All right. And one thing, oh, yeah. All right, um, we're, motion to set budget workshop for Thursday, March twenty-one, twenty twenty-four at six PM.
Here again, we need to discuss the new twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. Thursday night, starting at six o'clock, is that, is this a good night for everybody?
Uh, yes.
Yes. March twenty-four.
Motion for that day?
I'll make a motion to set budget workshop for Thursday, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four at six PM.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hope motion passes. Okay, moving on to action item seven C, motion to appoint one of the candidates to Ashley Hamel's vacant city council seat effective February nine, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to appoint John Price to Ashley Hamel's vacant city council seat um, effective February ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Can I get a second?
And second that.
Um. And we're gonna discuss, so.
So now we'll discuss.
Who would like to start? Ms. Powell, would you like to start?
Well, I can't tell you how impressed I was with both you guys, but I, I kinda wonder where John is, if something happened or what.
No, he was still in. Oh, okay.
All right, um. And I was just so happy to see both of you and how you are interested and willing and able to work for our city. So, um, John is about to retire. And, um, there's a lot of things he can be doing when he retires, and I know you're still working full-time. And, uh, there's definitely gonna be a seat open. And I hope to see you running for it, and you could sit right here. Or, or there, yeah. But it, we've had a very interesting year. We've had just some tough decisions to make. And it's been wonderful because when you start these things going, you think, oh my God, what are we doing? And then as it moves along, you realize we're doing the right thing for this community, especially our library and our multi-housing and the marijuana, and, um, it's just been a very interesting and wonderful year. And, um, you, you just have to know those things are gonna happen, but when you've got, when you're working with such a great bunch of people, it always works out, in my opinion.
That's my, that's the end of my discussion. Ms. Conley?
Um. I, this is not my preference. Um, I don't know how to say that in a way that's polite. Um, I have, I have some concerns about the responses to some of the questions. I'm exhausted from fights about marijuana. I'm not interested in having more fights about marijuana. And the response to that question concerns me. Um, there were, the fact, I understand he doesn't have to be here, but if you're gonna be up in this seat next month, you should maybe be present for this conversation. I, that's my, my two cents.
Thank you. Mrs. Race?
Um, I agree with a lot of what Rose said. Um, I think that it, um, with him actually being retired now, he has more time, um, to, we have a lot of stuff going on. It seems like it's not just one meeting a month right now. There's a lot of new things coming up and, um, I think it'll give him a chance to, really dive into this. And, uh, that's really the, I mean, to be able to have two of you, let alone one, is just amazing to have, so. But the, the good part about it is, uh, we will have seats available soon, so.
Mr. Gross?
I would say no.
Uh, are we, is this, are we calling for the vote?
No, he's talking to, oh.
He's discussing the motion.
That's why surprise is going this way. Okay. Uh, reason being is that I do believe, I, I firmly believe both of them are qualified. Different ways, different things. Uh, he did speak his voice on the marijuana, which is fine. Uh, people spoke to a degree, even tonight, on it, okay? Uh, we are entitled to our opinions and beliefs, but we have to look for the best of the community. The difference in the two is that I believe there's more, and I don't know by getting the information from, from the gentleman, what type of a management type position he had. Okay. I do believe that the, and I hate to use the term the opponent, the other candidate, has more as far as negotiating, working within a group. And I think that would be a real plus with being on the board. I would love to have heard a little more description as to what type of a position he held with the company in Wolverine. Uh, it would be very easy for me to say, geez, it'd be nice to have another guy on the board, but I'm not looking for gender. I'm looking for what I think we need, and I think I, we need somebody who is used to dealing possibly in more stressful positions than determining what shoe line to, to run. That not being derogatory, or not intended to be derogatory. I hope he chooses to run. I would have liked to have seen him here, but, uh, and that's not the reason, cause he's not here. It's, it's just, I think there's a management type situation that deals with the bargaining and, and bargaining that we have to do up here. So, and that's why I couldn't go with what's mentioned, so.
Thank you. Mr. Marvel?
Uh, yeah, both candidates, I thought. The thing I really, really liked about both of them is they were honest. You know, they didn't put a mask on and they didn't make statements that weren't true. You know, they were very straight and upfront with us about their experience. And I respect that. I respect that with both of them, and whichever one does not get on here tonight, I, I would like to see them run in November for sure. And so thank you both candidates for running, or for speaking to us tonight and for coming, so. And one more thing I'd like to add to that too is, me personally, I could learn from both of them, you know? There's something I can learn from both of them, and for me, it, it does kinda speak a little bit to me that he's not here right now. I don't know what his plans were for the night. And I do see with, uh, the other candidate that, uh, a little bit more management experience in the resume from some of the answers I heard, so I kinda favor that a little more.
Um. Both candidates were good. Um, I thought that, um, Angela answered a little more fully, you know, with just a few, a few more answers that kinda compounded, expounded on the questions a little bit, but that could be a personality style too, you know, and it does show me something that you are here. Um, but I, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a hard, hard decision. Any, any more discussion, ladies, men, gentlemen? No? Let's call the vote.
Okay.
Make the motion, we made the motion, okay. Um.
This is for John.
Yeah, this is, this is for John. Um, Mrs. Conley?
No.
Mr. Gross?
No.
Mr. Marvel?
No.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Lisa Atchison?
No.
So we need to make another motion?
I, I will make a motion to appoint Angela Winters to the vacancy on city council for the remaining term.
Motion.
Any more discussion? Let's call the vote. Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison, yes. Six. Welcome. We're excited.
You have no idea what you've just stepped into.
Care of, yeah.
And now she's gonna issue your oath of office.
So this is, uh, for your term of city council, the unexpired term of Ashley Hamel effective February ninth. So I, Angela Winters, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the city charter and the code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city council member to the best of my abilities. I do.
Congratulations. I do hope he comes back.
Yeah.
Okay. I would think so. Okay.
On YouTube also, if you wanna look at previous meetings.
Moving on to seven D, motion to approve professional services agreement with Fishback for twenty twenty-four Ash Street reconstruction, water main, sewer main, and road from First Street to Park Street in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
We're bringing the assistance to you tonight, um, to prepare for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Um, so if we can get the engineering, we looked at the budget, we worked with, um, our public works department. We have this money available in the current year budget. If we could get the engineering all secured, this could be a project for the next fiscal year, um, and we'll know the budget number to budget for that, the whole project, water, sewer, and the road. Um, so this is an essential step that we need to get this done.
Madam Mayor? I will make a motion to, I don't have the, as stated, I don't have it. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm back in packet on the people. I gotta, okay. Uh, a motion to approve professional service agreement with Fishback for twenty twenty-four Ash Street reconstruction, water mains, sewer main, and road from First Street to Park Street in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
That motion.
And I will flip to that part of the agenda. We have two agendas is the problem.
Yes. Um. Is, is the, is the sewer and water mains breaking down in that area?
They're old, so whenever we compare all of that at once, and then this will prepare that part of the water, sewer, and road to continue. water, sewer and road to continue Ash Street.
Yes, okay.
Done at once.
That part where you like do the, every time you do the road, you do the pipes? Because then you don't have to tear the road to do the pipes. Yeah. Jerry Hall, still listening to?
Anybody else? Okay, I'll call the vote. Uh, Mrs. Conley?
Yeah.
Mr. Gross?
Yeah.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yep.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison, yes. Moving on to action item seven E, motion to approve professional services agreement with Flesh and Van, Vandenbrink for design and construction, engineering services for the heart of Cedar Springs Park Improvement Project, an amount not to exceed eighty six thousand dollars. This amount is from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion as presented.
I'll second that.
He's, he's on it, as presented.
Let's call the vote.
Is this just the, um, it's a design and construction engineering services, it won't be building anything, just making the plan.
Would you like to say anything before we vote or?
Um, we've been informed by the state of Michigan that we scored high enough to receive this grant. Um, Fleas and Brandon Brink can't do anything until this agreement is approved. The legislature hasn't secured the money yet, but, um, that we're told we can, we can proceed with design. Um, so the sooner we get this done, the sooner we can bid it out and it'll be a real project.
This is the one we tried to get last year and just missed, right? Like we came in like, I don't know, four point, like we were the next on the list. So this is a big deal, right? I mean.
For the heart of Cedar Springs, uh, pavilion restroom, natural playground, some parking. A grand, three hundred thousand city, three hundred thousand trust fund grant.
Okay, let's call the vote. Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Right. Now we are on to, um, that's resolution offering the sale of real property located when the, within the West Street Industrial Development.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to, for a resolution authorizing the sale of real property located within the West Street Industrial Development with the parcel number four, one dash zero, two, three, dash, six, four, zero, dash, zero, zero, six, dash, six, more commonly known as the postal address of seven sixty West Street and related matters.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Falcon, any comments on that?
I am so excited to bring this to your attention tonight. Um, we just received it, um, hot off the press. Um, so we have to answer them by February sixteenth, so it was bring it to you tonight or call a special meeting. I've already forwarded this to our attorney. He prepared the resolution for us tonight.
Right, it's such tiny little.
I think the price is right in the ballpark. There, there's a couple, um, EDA has to approve this because we accepted money from them to extend the water and sewer and create this development. Um, I honestly don't see any issues there, so the sooner we can.
Clear on the, um, so in the past, we had a issue that there were some places who were going to make an offer, but then weren't clear on the covenant of like how it has to be.
Of that is the next step.
We, I, I, be super honest, haven't read all that yet.
I believe that.
Yep. So twenty thousand square foot building, fifty new jobs. This is huge.
And we can pay back a substantial portion of the, the bond that we pulled to match the grant to make, to recapture that money.
Totally.
This is almost there?
Most.
Not quite, but.
Yep.
Close, because we've been paying on it annually.
Yep.
That's sort of a big deal.
Okay, let's call the vote. Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yeah.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison? Yes, motion carries.
Please. Is that a work on or is this new industry that's coming in here?
They're an existing business in Grand Rapids, so I'm not sure if this is going to be another.
Absolutely, not an expansion.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to discussion items. An ordinance to amend Kent County Animal Control Regulatory for the first reading. Mrs. Falcon?
Um, this has a lot of moving parts. The animal chapter has several sections in it. Um, we wanted to remove everything that is covered by the Kent County Animal Control Ordinance. Um, so what this first one here is doing that and then basically everything else left that we wanted to keep is going to be moved elsewhere in our code of ordinances. This went to planning commission last night. Um, our city planner actually did some more revisions today. I just received it in my email. I haven't had a chance to review it, so. First reading, more to come. Um, this, this is a little complicated. We want to make sure we keep, you know, have all of our bases covered, yet allow Kent County Sheriff's Department to help us where we need them, um, and under their ordinance.
Um, I have a question, Madam Mayor, if I can, about, um, so, and I don't know, and, and, and my question is basically, I've had people ask me again about chickens. And to be super clear, I do not personally want chickens. This is not about me. Um, but if we were to have, and, and we've had votes on chickens twice, and both times they've been five to four. Um, that would not, we could look at that again and it would not be related to this, right? Okay. Yep. Just clarifying that. And it's to whether or not a chicken is a pet. I, I know some people who've had a pet chicken, but that's.
One of them, when I was a kid, yeah, I did, I loved her.
And, and my understanding is, this was also unclear last night, um, about like parakeets? Because it said no fowl, which like, how does your, and again, I don't have a parakeet, but like, how do your parakeets and your parrots and your, your other pet tropical birds fit in? And then, um, I had a kid who's not a kid anymore, but now who had a red-tailed boa and a leopard gecko and a assorted lizard, you know? Who now, by the way, if you need any of those animals treated, she's the hospital manager for Wholehearted Animal Veterinary on the Belt Line. If you need, if you have needs for your taegoo to be, but, um, I don't know that it addresses any of that, which also, I don't know.
That's one of the things the city planner clarified today. He created definitions of the different types of animals. So it'll, it's still in planning commissions, um, on their table. It'll go back to them at their next meeting, so. So more changes are coming, I'm proposing.
Do you, so what do you, what are you looking for from us?
So this, this, do you have any problems with this, you know, as written, horses on sidewalks, habitual barking? Do, do you have any problem with this language? No, okay, perfect.
I guess my one question would be, how do we define habitual barking?
Someone that doesn't. A dog that doesn't stop barking for a long time.
But what is, what is?
Ten minutes is long enough.
I don't, I mean.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I mean, I don't personally, again, I don't have an issue, but like, I have a neighbor that has a dog that she actually thinks barks too much. I think it's fine. I don't have an issue. But she will say to me all the time, I'm sorry. I'm like, you're, you're fine. It's fine. Like it's a squirrel. It's okay.
Affects somebody else to the extent they're not.
It just feels hard to quantify.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Gross?
I can tell you for parts of my other life, it's a very difficult one to try to enforce. Uh, habitual is, is subject to the person that's doing the complaining. And so, uh, it's very difficult. Uh, it would have to be something that you would almost have to pull the neighborhood and find out what, what their total feelings is. And, but even then, uh, that person has happened to raise the ire of everybody else on the block. It may change from block to block. It, it's a very, very difficult one to try to define.
But then doesn't it also make it difficult to enforce?
That is correct.
Point, doesn't it get us into trouble if we're trying to?
Mercy of the whomever you're in front of having the hearing as to whether they're going to find it guilty or not. And they're going to go back to how is it defined? So. With the definition for it, so possibly the manager can pick up something from some other area that has been, uh, has worked for them, but.
Personally have an opinion on what that should be? I'm just concerned that that's really vague and that we could find ourselves in a place where this person thinks this dog's, you know, barking for three minutes at a squirrel on Tuesday was habitual. And I don't want to be in the place to have to like make that determination.
Maybe our city planner can have some thoughts on it too from other areas that he works.
Horses on the sidewalk? I'm okay with it.
That again is something that is based on an area. And if you talk to most people, they understand if it's when the dog is outside and wanting to get in. They have to now learn to let the dog in and not just chain it out for the day and let the dog go. So, and it's just, they're kind of at mercy in some ways of the person that has the complaint filed against them.
Are there other parts of it that anybody?
Looked good to me. I was glad to see that, um, dog that's, um, terrorizing the neighborhood that now Kent County Animal Control will be in here and taking care of it and have the right to do so.
Have we had a lot of problem with that? Just, I mean.
Happens a lot where I live. Very consistent, very, very consistent. Yeah, I feel like you guys are always playing, uh, hide and seek with dogs, you know, you're always in there looking for dogs. So I'm glad that this is going through.
Yeah.
And tear a little kid to pieces, you know? Kind of be on top of it.
Well, there's, I mean, I, I have a friend who's telling me that a person up the block was getting off the bus in Detroit and it's like in critical condition in the hospital, having been attacked by three dogs that, so I mean, absolutely. I just haven't, I haven't experienced, I mean, and I live in the part of the community. I have, I have two dogs and I have a fenced in yard and it's, you know, once in a while, one of them sneaks out the door when somebody opens it, but. Right, right. Right. Yeah. Well, that's the, like, what's habitual? Yeah, that's, you know.
It's something that you're part of all the time.
Last, last summer, there was not, there was a neighbor across, around the corner that had, um, was babysitting their, the mother-in-law's dogs. Well, she was like on vacation and they got out and I had went out and opened up my van to put some stuff in it and it came out and I had two dogs that were not mine. And I'm like, in the car, they like hopped up in the car. And I'm like, I don't know who they belong to. And, you know, I took a picture and put it up on Facebook and.
Yeah, yeah.
Getting there. With no additional discuss and discussion, we will move on to item eight C, discussion on twenty twenty-three Downtown Development Authority Annual Report. Mrs. Falcon, would you like to begin the discussion?
Do A and B all in one?
Oh, I don't know. Yep, I'm sorry, I did. Yep. So, um.
This is the zoning piece.
Oh, the zoning.
Yes.
Let's go there, I'm sorry.
Um, we're going to add to chapter thirty-two, um, new section, animals, number of animals permitted. These are things we wanted to keep. Um, Kent County Animal Control doesn't tell us how many animals we, we can keep. That's something we decide. So that's already written, so this will be added to chapter thirty-two. Again, maybe more changes from the city planner from last night's planning commission meeting, so.
And that seemed fine, I think. The number of dogs and number of, I mean, that seemed fine.
Okay, thanks. Move on to C, the annual report from the DDA.
I have pictures for this one. Um, yeah, so I brought this to the DDA. I'm sorry, I don't know how to, um, display it so everybody can see it. Um, our DDA does a wonderful job supporting events and, um, several things, uh, in twenty twenty-three, um, along with the, some local scout groups and families. We installed a bike repair station. Um, they supported all of the, um, concerts at the amphitheater on Wednesday nights. Uh, the Cedar Blitz Bike Race, this will be the third year that they're helping, um, uh, contributions towards that. This past year, we had our first annual ball drop. That was very successful. A lot of people said, oh my God, I didn't realize what a huge event that could have been and it, and it was, so that was very nice.
So that's the chamber, we should give them a props, right? Oh, it was DDA that did the ball drop?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, that's right, that's right.
The chamber was a part of it as well, but this is.
Would there be enough people? And so the folks who believed in that, we need to give you some, mm-hmm, some props.
The DDA is very instrumental in lighting, putting all the lights on Main Street. Um, very impressive. We get compliments on that all the time. Uh, last year, they, they did contribute a little bit to the large sidewalk project that we had going on, on the west side of Main Street. And then, um, I put this on here, they, they do contribute occasionally when we, uh, pave parking lots. They contributed a little bit to the parking lot behind B and B. This coming summer, they're going to help contribute to the paving of seventy-four North Second Street Parking Lot, so.
Didn't they do a piece of the snow removal on the sidewalks on Main Street during the, the giant snowmageddon?
DDA helps with that as well. So very instrumental in helping the city where they can, so appreciate them very much. Any questions?
Appreciate their work though.
Yeah, yes.
Very good.
And to all the folks who, who, um, Madam Mayor, if I can, to all the folks who were very unsure about whether or not the New Year's Eve thing. Wahoo, right? I'm, and I just love to see that we can have, um, something local. And I'm super boring. I like stayed at home and. I fell asleep. Yeah, like, I stayed awake because my kid wanted me to stay awake, but otherwise I was totally on the couch with the book. But just that for people to be able to do it close to home and we're, we've been working on walkability and to be able to go out and access and not worry about necessarily driving and just, I just, I saw the pictures and it was just lovely, so.
Several of the businesses said they had terrific turnout and they were very happy with it and hope we continue.
Let's move on to communications. Do we have anything that we need to go over in communications? Okay, moving on to department reports. City manager?
Um, I'll apologize now. I have quite the list tonight, but been doing a lot of stuff. Um, I, I hope you all had a chance to see in your packet, Gary Osborne, he just deserves a kudos again for the job that, um, he had all the hallways painted at the wastewater treatment plant. Fabulous job. Um, the bids came in anywhere from six. Um, the bids came in anywhere from six thousand dollars to twenty-two thousand dollars. We went with the six thousand dollar bid, two coats of paint and it's just fabulous. He really, really, really cares about that treatment plant and it, it shows. So I just want to give Gary a kudos for that. Um, this past week, Tuesday, um Sergeant Probst and I did some business visits downtown. Um, the ones that were open, we went in, introduced ourselves, asked if they had, you know, questions, comments, concerns, had some good discussion with some of them. Um, hopefully, when the weather gets a little better, we'll continue them, maybe this summer, no, it was nice. Um F and I met with um Fleas and Vanderbrink um this past week to go over the final design for the pocket park that's going in on Main Street. That was the wrap grant that we secured for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're matching that with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, bids would be going out by the end of the month, so that should come to your April council meeting for approval of the contractor. And then um that construction will begin on or around May first. Uh, once they start, they have a hundred and twenty days to finish it, so that will be a spring, summer completely done. We're not closing Main Street, um everything will be done, you know, on the sidewalk, back into the lot. So that's very exciting to see that happen. Um, we also discussed, I think I've brought the maps to you before or sent them to you, um Fleas and Vanderbrink is doing some design work to redo Riggel Park and Morley Park. Uh, we went over more changes on that, um when I get updated maps, I'll bring them back to you. Those are just really creating designs um for future grant funds, which yesterday afternoon I did watch um a D and R uh webinar that just kind of refreshed me on the different grants that they offer, what projects qualify, the timelines. So in twenty, early twenty twenty-five, um I'll be writing some grants, pairing them together for a twenty twenty-six project. So these plans will definitely come in handy this year for the future. Um, I signed up to attend Capitol Conference March twelfth and thirteenth. If anybody's interested, this is in your magazine that's at your desks tonight. I, I really like MML, they do a fantastic job for um municipalities. Yep. Um, next Tuesday, we get a bunch of people in this room and we close on the Sand Lake Land or it's also known as the Dean's Property on the east end of Ash Street. Um, that's the parcel where they're giving us a parcel, they're keeping the center parcel and then our well will be on the, on the far eastern end. We'll be closing on all that, so that will be good. Uh, continue to work on the new fiscal year budget. We had, just wanted to give my thoughts on the City Connect meeting that we had a couple weeks ago. Um, not a lot of people attended, but that's okay, I think we start somewhere and I hope we continue to have them and yes, yep, good feedback. Uh, last Friday morning, I attended the West Michigan Regional Planning Meeting at our fire station and I was the guest speaker where I, a lot of people have never applied for an EDA grant. So I just kind of went through all the steps, it is a long process. Um, but it's, it's worth it when you have infrastructure that you need to sell land, so I, I think a lot of people got out of that, got, you know, good information out of that. Uh, last week, I was also guest speaker at the local women's club. That was very fun, uh good group, good group of ladies there that um obviously care about Cedar Springs and surrounding area and they do a lot for the community. And one invitation uh next Thursday, February fifteenth, seven AM, sorry, seven AM. CBDT is having their first meeting of the year and everybody's welcome. It's at Perry's Place.
What day of the week is that?
Uh, Thursday, uh, the fifteenth is Thursday. So that's it.
Okay, Department of Public Works.
Hi, I have nothing at this time.
Okay.
Our yearly stats, uh, we're trying to put them together a little bit differently this year, we're trying to be a little more detailed in some of our areas to kind of give us a better idea of what some of the neighborhoods in the city here. How many calls and what types of calls that we're having those areas like the North Trailer Park, department complexes, the South Trailer Park. We're trying to also get off maybe some other areas that we can be a little bit more specific on where all of our calls are at and our call volume to give, give us everybody a little more detail about where our calls are at for the city, so working on that.
All right, any question? All right, it would be chief that law then. Fire department.
Start out with the fact that, uh, sorry, we did have a little bit of a snafu with our report, it didn't get in, in time for you to get to your packet. Synopsis is done. Our monthly report too, so um it will be in your next packet as you go through that, um we have included some uh calls that we've received help on and help too, so we'll get that for, for uh Councilman Gross there. And then uh if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. If you have any direct questions on any specific calls or anything like that, I can give you that now, otherwise you can wait till the next one's packet.
I have a question. Where's our fire truck?
In the process of trying to figure out if it's going to be completed or if it's going to be moved.
Moved from
Where they have it now, right?
At this point, it's, it's, we're just, it's been there long enough, we need to find out what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Probably second priority right now to go through that. Than that right now is the new fire truck in twenty twenty-six that we gotta get straightened out for.
Wait till twenty twenty-six to get our Good, thank you, thank you.
Any questions?
I, may I follow up just on that? Do you need anything from us? To facilitate that, like
Play or for the new truck?
A vote to have it moved? Do you need money? Do you need?
At the moment Darla isn't, and I have been working on this, so we will, we will get a plan together and have that for you.
I read Flannel Day will have that.
Could answer that for you, I do not know that yet.
Quickly is a vote or a something from us, please come.
Try to get you a proper report on next month.
Clerk's Department has been very busy with our upcoming election preparations. Um, we had our public accuracy testing, we had two um individuals from the League of Women Voters there. Um, they had great questions, um our new election commission member also had really good questions and was very um helpful in that process. Um, so it's a little update on some of the things we've been working on. Um, I did want to let you guys know that we are fully staffed, I don't know if I let you guys know that already, but we are fully staffed for the nine days, we've got, yeah, big relief. Um, to get that done, we've got almost thirty people um working those shifts, so it was, it was a big undertaking by our department, um and we will um unfortunately, because the state did not have some of the training materials ready, that still aren't quite ready. Uh, we will be doing extensive on-the-job training um for those individuals, specifically just on our new e-poll book, they all received generalized training, um but we know that we'll get through it. Um, early voting starts next Saturday already, the seventeenth, eight-thirty to four-thirty. Um, that is the nine consecutive days before the election, so that'll be the seventeenth through the twenty-fifth. And then we have um Election Day, which is Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, seven AM to eight PM.
Thank you to the best city clerk ever. Yeah.
And it's so everyone gets to vote.
I guess so they have the opportunity to vote.
No excuses.
Long, it's just whether they take that opportunity, sorry about butting in on that, but uh
Easy for everyone.
Okay, with no additional department reports, we will move on to closed session. Oh, I'm so, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the finance director, I'm sorry, Emily.
So I could see, no, we're fine, no worries at all. Um, so just a couple of quick things, um things have been pretty busy for me lately as well, um finished up some of the year-end IRS reporting, so glad that's done with. Um, so that's the W two's ten ninety-nine, it's got the health insurance forms out, so that should all be done by now. Um, twenty twenty-three taxes, the, that's coming to an end, winter taxes are due um next Wednesday and then by March first or on March first, we'll be settling up the outstanding balance with the county. Um, so that'll be, be good to get that wrapped up and get ready for the next tax year. Um, the big focus um on the next couple of months will be on our budget for the next fiscal year. Um, just getting, getting hot and heavy into that and we'll plan to have a draft ready for your review at the March um city council meeting and then we'll have the budget workshop a week after that, so um be ready for that and um I've been enjoying the involvement on the NKCE board, so I've been to two meetings now, so things are going good with that and programs have been really busy, um had the daddy-daughter dance uh last weekend, I was not there, but I heard it was a really good turnout and everything went very smoothly. Um, and then we got the uh mother-son Nerf war coming up in March and that is expected to be a good turnout as well, so things are going, going good for NKCE and all the programs that are going on right now.
Thank you, sorry. I'm so, you know, excited about the closed session, um I would entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight, section eight D of the Open Meetings Act to consider the purchase or lease of real property at eight oh one PM. Get that motion?
Make that motion.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Can we have a little break?
Yes. Five minutes? Is it appropriate to include our new council member in the closest?
Also.
Rebecca, this is Nelson.
Effective until tomorrow, unfortunately, she's a member of the public at this point.
All right, with that, we'll go um take a five-minute recess and then head into closed session.
Sorry, I didn't catch the vote.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Penley?
Yes.
Mrs. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Miss Asheson, yes.
I would like a motion to return to open session, please.
I would make that motion.
Support.
Madam Clerk, do you need a roll call?
Voice vote is sufficient to come. Everybody that wants to vote for the motion, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, then do I just?
Yep.
Motion really to close session.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to permit the city manager to continue negotiations on the real property.
Roll call, vote please.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Marmol?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yeah.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison votes yes.
Motion carries.
Is there any?
Discussion about anything else before, oh, we've got, we've got council members. Comments?
Mr. Gross, would you like to start?
I'd like to comment on the number of officers and the ones that was selected. It's a very good group. They're experienced, they're knowledgeable, and they'll work out real well for the city. I appreciate all the work they do and things of that nature. I appreciate the things that we have covered tonight and have been managed to do. And it's still shorter than many of our others that we have had in the past. So, we have streamlined and sped things up, which is beneficial to us and those people that might be choosing to watch us on, on the internet or whatever we call it here. So, but, uh, I already hear about the situation with the former mayor, but we won't divulge that right now. But, uh, all of our wishes and thoughts are with him, so, okay. That's it.
Thanks, uh, big congratulations to Ms. Winters and, uh, yeah, uh, both candidates, so, as we've said multiple times, run, run again. So, run in November. Big congratulations to everybody in the fire department. And, uh, yeah, love this town and love everything that's going on, so continue to keep praying for it.
Mrs. Race.
I'm excited for a new, our new council member. I know it's a lot, but she's got all of us to help her through it. And, uh, I think we learn something new every time we're in a meeting, so, um, I am excited for all the new, the fire department, that's right. And, um, I think that's about it.
Mrs. Powell?
Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you next month.
Big thank you to our DPW who dug us out from Snowmageddon. So, Tanya, I'm telling you, you're probably not on here anymore, but wahoo, you did an amazing job as it dropped feet of snow from the sky. So, big thank you to all the DPW people, please tell them that. I know they probably snowed plow into, plowed snow until their eyes were crossed. And big thank you in advance to the clerk who's gonna make our nine days of voting happen. So, and finding all the folks to make that happen. And thank you to all the people in advance who are stepping up to be the people to make that happen.
Um, I would just like to thank the staff again. Things run so smoothly around here. And anytime I got a question and it's answered, or they find me the answer, they're, it's, it's just great. Thank you for your guidance, I appreciate it. Working with all of you guys, I love it. And I'm sorry, I'm still learning. I think things are running more smooth, a little bit better every time, so, yeah. And, um, thanks for our city manager, we, um, when opportunities come, come a-knocking, and we've got grants and other things out there happening. She's always looking into it, making sure we get, uh, everything that we need to make a decision on projects. Rebecca, um, just the running of the, of the elections and everything is just, you know, and keeping up on everything, it's just been great, so. Then the other girls on the staff.
And the DPW.
Just everybody that works for us, it's, they're, they're just amazing. And seeing all the firemen here was, was awesome, to know that most of them are, almost all of them are voluntary, you know? So, just that we get that many people that are willing to volunteer for our, um, fire department. We, and we have a pretty awesome fire department. Not pretty awesome, awesome fire department, so mostly that's, that's it, I think.